Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to and call the meeting to order for the Burke County Board of Commissioners, Board of Education Special Joint Meeting for Friday, September 8, 2023, here being held by our friends at the Board of Education at 11:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, I would like to do our roll call now. We have Vice Chair Britton in attendance. We have Commissioner Burns, we have Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Carswell, also our county attorney, our county finance officer, and our county manager, Madam Clerk. And I would remind all of our folks to please silence your mobile devices, and then when you do speak, make sure your microphones are activated so those listening on TV or streaming can hear your comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mulway. At this time, I would like to call the Burke County Board of Education meeting to order for our special call joint meeting on Friday, September 8, at 11:00 a.m. Those in attendance for the Burke County Board of Education are Ms. Leslie Taylor, Ms. Jane Sohojovich, Mr. Seth Hunt, Vice Chair Erin Johnson, and myself, Wendy Craven. Also, we have in attendance Dr. Karen Alton, our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Mike Swan, our Superintendent, and Chris Campbell, our Board Attorney. Linda Huffman is our Board Attorney Clerk.
Gentlemen, at this time, you've had a chance to review the agenda. What's the pleasure of our board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. All those in favor signify with uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that motion carries 5-0.
Right. We'll turn it over to the Board of Education. I make a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. That was unanimous, all those in favor. All right.
Thank you. And for our folks, obviously, we have an item for decision, what we're all here for. I'm going to make a couple of comments before I turn it over to Madam Chair. I know we're all excited to be here today. This is literally history in the making. It's been a long time coming. We've been dealing with this legislation that was probably the right thing at the right time, but that legislation's 40 years old. Obviously, facts on the ground have changed, relationships have changed, and this is, once again, this is the type of progress that we'll remember for decades to come. There's a couple people I want to thank, and they didn't know I was going to do this, but speaking of relations of the school board, I will say they're at an all-time high. The trust sitting here in a joint meeting speaks to that. We have mutual respect and admiration for one another, and that's what's made us come together today. And that started almost, I'm going to say more than a decade ago, when at the time Chairman Carswell and also then-chairman, Board Chair Randy Burns, when he was on the Board of Education, started forging this relationship. And it's only gotten better with time because of the folks on your board now, and so I did want to recognize that. I also would be remiss, none of us would be where we are sitting in this room today. He doesn't know I'm going to tell him this either, is Brian Epley, our county manager. We have had this legislation in place for 40 years. There's been some more legal precedent set after that. It's been kind of a tangled mess for the last 40 years. I think Chris Campbell, he's taken a look at it, all of us taken a look at it, and it has been extremely complicated to get where we are today. And I have to give the credit to get this done this quickly to our county manager, because this is a very complicated issue. But, that being said, here we are today, working together, and these boards having this joint resolution is going to be a game changer, not just for the county, but not just for the school system, but for making your, it's going to make your decisions going forward easier, because we're going to be able to free up funding. We'll be able to help students, staff, the teachers for decades to come. So this is a remarkable day, a long time in the making. And I also want to say that, before we vote, we do need to keep in mind that Senator Daniel and Representative Blackwell are a key cog to this. We've had discussions with them. Without their support, obviously, us having a joint resolution would not work. And so, but us coming together and voting unanimously and working together has convinced them, obviously, that this is the right thing to do at the right time, and they're 100% behind this, and we appreciate their support. And that's all the comments I have so far.
Well, that's going to be hard to follow, but I also want to give a big thank you to Brian Epley. His expertise and mastermind behind this, and just his overall willingness to embrace this. This board, I will speak for all of us, is very appreciative of you, Brian, very. And I know Mr. Lawson has enjoyed working with you as well as Dr. Swan. And I want to give a shout out to Dr. Swan for all the hard work you've put behind this, and also Mr. Lawson. We couldn't have done this without you. This board puts a lot of trust into both of you gentlemen, and we are very appreciative of all the work behind the scenes that you did, along with Margaret and Brian. I was a principal during part of all of the issues in the past, and it was, and I want to speak to that. It was a very tumultuous time, trying to run a school and trying to do what was right and not knowing what was going to happen. And having a child in high school at the time and not knowing if we were going to lose our accreditation, this is just one aspect of all of the 40 years of issues that we've had. And I'm just so grateful to be sitting here today and being a part of this, and I know the other board members are as well. It is time to turn the page. It's just like, there's a law that, in the state of North Carolina, the calendar law, and I have said that's an antiquated law, and it's just time to move on. And this board has said that, and our county commissioners have supported that with us, as well as Mr. Blackwell. And so, it's the same thing. Sometimes it's just time to move forward, and I'm just grateful to be here today and be a part of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gentlemen, we've been presented the resolution. Is there any more comments before we take a vote? Gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2023-18.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. All those in favor signify with uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that carries 5-0. Madam Chair?
I make a motion to adopt the MOA and the repeal of Article 39 Special Act. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody want to make any comments?
Just a quick couple, if you don't mind.
All right.
This is a process that's been going on several months, at the forefront of certainly the Board of Education's mind, and I also believe the commissioners, is the educational quality for our kids. And when you boil it all down, that's certainly why I'll be voting in favor of this. We've looked at so many different things, and this has been, quite frankly, an incredibly complicated issue, that a great big onion that you had to peel the layers off. And when you get right down to it, considering the good stewardship of the dollars and the spending patterns of the Board of Education of the past years, it's enabled us to be in a really good position with the support and of these tax dollars coming from the Act, as well as a spirit of a new relationship with our county commissioners. So it is time to do this thing, and it is time to move forward in a new era. And with everything that we've looked at and considered over several months, I can honestly say I feel very good about doing this. And I'm very appreciative to everybody that's been mentioned here before. I think this is a good thing for our kids, and as Chairman Mulway said, I think it's a historic day for our school system. And I appreciate, I'm truly thankful for that spirit.
I'm not really sure that I can say anything different than what's been mentioned, but I just want to say that I'm proud to be able to play a small role in opening doors and creating opportunities for our district. This today is a game changer. It's unprecedented, this unprecedented resolution is going to deliver meaningful results for our schools, our people, and as Mr. Mulway said, our county. Special thanks again to Brian Epley and Keith Lawson for your time and your strategic foresight in helping get this. Appreciate you guys. Thank you too, Dr. Swan.
I just have a little bit to add, a little bit different twist. I came on this board, I was voted on by the board when Ed Noeller came off in March of '21. And when that seat became vacant, I thought and prayed long and hard on it, because I'd never run for any office before. I'd served on several boards, but it was something that I'd never done, and I do not like politics. So where am I at? Right in the middle of it. However, the board selected me, and I was incredibly honored. And then I ran in '21, in November of '21, and the people of Burke County elected me. And I am very humbled and very honored to be on this board. I've known Keith Lawson for several years. Brian, don't tell your wife this, but I fell in love with you when I met you in February. I knew that Burke County had brought in the right guy, and you have brought to the table a tremendous amount of energy, trust, certainly your education and your expertise and background. And we greatly appreciate it very much. So, on the Board of Education, we are extremely appreciative of everything you do. And Dr. Swan, well, we tell him all the time how much we love him, but anyway. So just thank you for everybody bringing this together. This is a monumental, and I feel very honored to be serving on the board at this particular time when this is taking place. So, thank you.
All right. Erin, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I just want to say once again, thank you, Mr. Epley especially, because you figured this whole thing out. So, and that was big. Commissioners, we're grateful for y'all and looking forward to, you know, good relationships and moving forward. And of course, to our staff, once again, thank y'all.
Dr. Hamstree, do you want to say anything?
I apologize for being late. No, I think this is a historic thing. I've been here a long time with this, and historically, there's always been kind of a rough water, but this is a real chance to put some oil on the water. It's a good thing, and I think it's a place we need to be. And I'm really grateful for both boards coming together and the chairs coming together, and seeing the relationship we've got now, because we've got people like Randy and people that understand that have been here before, it's a good deal. It's a good deal for the county, the students. It's just good for all of us. So, I appreciate the effort that everybody's made, and we just work and continue to do that. It's a good deal.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gentlemen, any closing remarks?
Mr. Chair, I will just make one comment, again, in appreciation to all the work that's gone into this. Obviously, I think we've all been enlightened as to what's the difficulty of administering what this legislation required us to do, and the, all the strings that made it difficult to get funds where we needed them really to be. And so, I too appreciate all the work that's been done, appreciate Brian's work. His expertise, I think, brought a lot to the table, his accounting background, and just willingness to dig into what was happening with this legislation, how it was impacting us, really setting us apart from the rest of the state of North Carolina and putting us at a disadvantage. And again, I appreciate along with everyone, all the efforts that has gone into making this happen. Thank you.
On behalf of Brother Phil Smith here, who has a little problem with his voice because of COVID, his wife really appreciated that. because of COVID, his wife really appreciated that. Phil wants you to know that he is pleased that this has finally come to fruition, and he thanks each board member, the education member, and each county commissioner for the work that they have done. It is good to advance and move forward.
Gentlemen, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's kind of surreal sitting here today, and I look out and I see a lot of really familiar faces that hold a special place in my heart. This is a long time coming, and this is a historic day. You know, this marks, this puts a major pin in the map of where I think we're headed. And I think it establishes, if you look at a map, you can't plot a trip to anywhere without knowing where you are. I think this clearly defines today where we are. And I'm very proud of the circumstances that we find ourselves in. You know, this is something that I scratched my head over for eight years, and I never could figure, I just knew something was wrong. Honestly, I didn't. I didn't ever come to the realization that we were set apart from every other county and the state in legislation that dates back 40 years. And then several other legislative acts happened after that, I think two more. And it, and all of it was a result of the fact that people couldn't communicate and they didn't trust each other. We're done with that. It's our commitment today, going forward, we're done with that. We're going to make decisions that are in the best interest of the people in this county, the students in our schools, our staff, our teachers. We're going to do the right thing and not look for a workaround to the right thing going forward. And getting rid of this, guys, it's unbelievable. I mean, I could sit here and tear up at how excited I am that this has come to be. And I know that he's probably been sufficiently bragged on today and doesn't care to have any more, but Brian's, Epley's ability to dig into this and find out the root causes and understand, coming from the outside, to be able, I think maybe that's what it took, someone coming from the outside who didn't have biases on either side, to be able to look at this situation and figure out objectively how it started, and chart a path forward objectively on how we get out of it. And we just voted, guys, we're out of it. If we, if, you know, if Representative Blackwell and Senator Daniel can get this through and get it passed for us, this is a huge day for Burke County. And I just hope everybody understands the significance of it. And I want to thank everybody at this table, the school board, or my fellow commissioners, the staff on both sides. We're making history today, just as Chairman Mulvey said. But thank you all very much.
Well said, Commissioner Burns. Madam Finance Officer, I know you've done a lot of work on this. Any comments?
Just excited to see it happen. Thank you, though.
Call on our county attorney. Any comments?
No comments.
Last but not least, our county manager.
I'll make just a few, obviously very humble, as we chatted earlier. I'm just glad to be a small part of the team, but the remarks were unnecessary, but very much appreciated. To me, leadership is uniting a group of people behind one common goal. And I think that's what each of you elected leaders are doing today. And that goal is moving forward, getting better, making decisions based on global public interest and what's best for the community. I have tremendous admiration for that, tremendous admiration for the professional staff and our colleagues on the school board side. Easy to tee up what ifs and ideas, easy to ask big questions when you've never been here and you don't know. To balance all that on the trust that we're authentic in trying to build and be better, it just takes a tremendous amount of intestinal fortitude from each of the people sitting to my right, including professional staff. And I have tremendous admiration for that, and the confidence that the recruitment to come here was the right decision for me and my family is further validated with this type of leadership. So, I'm grateful for that.
Any other comments? I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, do you have anything that you would like to say?
I think it's all been said. It's a good day for Burke County.
All right. Dr. Swan?
I would agree. It's been a pleasure working with Brian and the team. We've talked to each other late at night, early in the morning, multiple times. Very easy to get a hold of, very responsive. So, I appreciate that, and just looking forward to this renewed partnership with the school board and county commissioners to make Burke County continue to grow.
Mr. Lawson, do you have anything?
Other than just to say this is a momentous day for Burke County. It's been a very long time. I'm appreciative of all of you waiting to have.
Thank you. Okay.
Gentlemen, at this time, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Vice Chair Britton, all those in favor signify with uplifted hand. Motion carried five zero. Madam Clerk?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All those in favor? All right. Meeting is adjourned.